To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
See how easy that was?
Uh, Whitcomb School Robotics.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. On Saturday, March 10th, 45 Middle School robotic teams from New England competed at the Wash Middle School in Framingham in the Southern New England Regional Tournament of VEX in the Zone. Six teams from Whitcomb qualified and competed in the day-long event. So, this evening, we have with us Team A. Pink Panther team members are Kobe Almeida, who is sick today, he's not here with us, Nick Chappelle, Morgane Shanay, Samantha Feden, Jack Camataris, Sethvika Motakuri, and Tom Pollard. They won the prestigious Build Award and placed first in the Skills Challenge of all 45 teams. I would like to introduce first the advisors to this robotics club, and that would be Mr. Jeff Gay and Ms. Joanne Mahoney.
Good evening. Thank you for having us. It's all about the kids tonight. We're very proud of them.
Absolutely. So, we're going to start our program this evening. Connor Bogle, our high school mentor, who comes over to work with our students often, is going to present a video, and then our students will show you what their robot can do.
Hi, my name is Connor Bogle. I've been doing the robotics program for about seven years now, and I'm the president of the robotics club at the high school, and I mentor the middle school robotics club. They've had a pretty great season this year. The whole Marlboro, including the high school, got 15 awards this year, and this team over here by themselves got eight. So, they did pretty great. So, to honor that, we made a highlight video, and here it is.
Whitcomb Middle School providing a common ground for students interested in robotics and competition. Seven years ago, a group of teachers decided to start their robotics club at Whitcomb Middle School. Working between the shop and the field room, students learns not only build, cut, shape, and construct their strategic robots, but they also learn how to program them.
We start the kids off with basic tips, and basically instruction of how to build a robot, and they have to do it on their own by themselves. It's basically a group project. The way I teach is let them fail, let them learn, let them build, so they have to do it in the group.
I've always liked, like, math and science and stuff, and it just, um, it's just always interested me. So, I just started, and now I actually like it in my starting career with it.
Seven teams, seven robots competing to make it to Worlds, the ultimate worldwide competition in April, competing in different categories and different age groups.
The new kids come in, they're all excited, and it's just great to see how they evolve. So, here we now are in January, and some of our teams had no idea what they were doing, and some of those teams have already qualified for regionals. So, just seeing the kids and what they've been able to do, and working together, collaboration, engineering design process, all of that is what we do.
Marlboro High School junior and member of the robotics club since the sixth grade, Connor comes back to help students at Whitcomb as mentor. He helps them through the year long robotic building process when he isn't competing in his own high school competitions with his robotics club.
I mentor even robotics club. I do this on a kind of medium frequent basis, but I do it frequent enough that it's like helping them. I also go to all the middle school only competitions that allow. It's really cool to just see a point of view, and how they, like, are formed as a team while they compete, how they communicate with the other teams. It's just cool to see that.
So far, four of the seven teams from the Whitcomb Robotics Club have made it to the Southern New England Regional Championships in March, where they come to qualify for Worlds.
I'd like to introduce you to 4344A. My name is Sethvika. I help build on the robot, and I also draw in the engineering notebook.
Hi, my name's Samantha, and I'm the driver for the, for our 4344A.
Hi, my name is Jack. I am the lead programmer, builder, and a partial driver.
I'm Thomas. I work with building and batteries, and since I'm in the seventh grade, the rest of my team is in eighth grade. I'll be forwarding the program next year.
I am Nicholas Chappelle, and I help build and, like, redesign the robot whenever it's needed.
My name is Morgane. I help build, and I'm the main notebook keeper. Because of all the hard work that we put into our notebook, we won Design Award four times, so I'd like to pass it around.
Do you mind pulling that back? In writing is mine.
Oh, that's cool.
That's great.
This is our banner for first place at the regionals, where we came first place in skills.
This is one of our Design Award trophies that we got at one of the three competitions that we got Design Award at.
This is our Robot Skills Award that we won at regionals for having the highest skill score out of any team, and this is one of the, this is the tournament champion title that we won.
This is our robot that we won Robot Skills with at the regional championship, and we will demonstrate how it works.
Does your robot have a name? Jack, what do you call it?
I don't know.
Very cool. Very cool.
So, for this year's game, we need to take those yellow cones and stack them on the mobile goal and, like, get as many points as possible, and then you can put the mobile goal in one of three zones, one for five points, 10 points, and 20 points.
Questions for the committee. Mr. Tennessee?
Of course, questions. Very cool, I have to tell you. How many of you all, like, did a lot of building, like Legos and all of that as you guys were growing up? Anyone? Yeah. Okay. So, did you kind of know that you wanted to go down this route, or when you guys had your opportunity of getting a little bit of engineering under your belt, is that, did that kind of help push it along? Yeah, exactly. And you guys had said tournaments, but how many tournaments did you need to compete in this past year? Like, it sounds like there were a number, because I'm seeing, like, October popped up, and November popped up, so, like, five or six to be able to get to the...
I think there were eight.
Wow, okay.
They started in October, and there's one month, a couple of months had two.
Wow.
And we go all the way to the regionals, which are always in March.
Okay. And then I heard mention of Worlds, so is that something coming up in the future for you all? Because it sounds like you guys did really well.
We did not qualify for Worlds.
Oh. Well, put it this way, you qualified from our standpoint, because you guys did amazing. That's amazing. I couldn't do anything like that.
We have one team, a seven grade team, who at regionals, the finals.
Wow.
And it's only the winners. It's a day-long event from seven in the morning until five or six at night, when we go on a week on Saturday.
It's really impressive. Thank you. Really impressive, guys.
Any other questions?
Oh, I had a question. So, the game, or whatever, when do you know what that is before the tournament, or do you not find out until that day? Like, how does that work?
The new game for next season is in the middle of the 20s.
Oh, that's what that means. Okay. And so, then you, how long do you have, actually, can you come to the microphone, because the people at home can't hear you? So, you'll get this, and then what do you do with that information?
Um, so you get the new game, and then you have pretty much until the first competition to design and build your robot. Usually, the first competition for New England is in October-ish, maybe, maybe late September. So, we pretty much have until, until then to build a robot, and usually at that competition, nobody's completely ready. So, the people that start earlier always have the advantage of getting the robot done on time.
And so, do you actually start now for next year?
Yeah.
And then, do you work over the summer?
Yeah, yep.
It's a lot of commitment.
At the middle school, on the 8th May, for the sixth and seventh graders, anyone that wants to join, and once they feel eligible to work, and they come back and join us, they'll be putting themselves into teams. We'll be watching the new game, analyzing it, sketching, designing, and so forth, and speculating.
And so, you start from scratch? Like, you don't modify this to meet next year's needs, or...
Completely depends on the game. Like, this year was a stacking game, so if next year's a stacking game again, we would, it would be pretty easy to modify the robots from this year. But usually, it's not close, so, like, a couple of years ago, it went from a stacking game to throwing an object across the field, so there was no...
Cool.
Almost no similarities. So, it's, usually, they make you take it apart.
And at the high school level, where you, what you're doing, is it just like this on steroids? I mean, like, is it like... What happens as you get older?
Yeah, yeah, pretty much. It's the same, it's the same exact game, but the robots are way more complicated. Like, this year, there was, I think, 15 or 16 robots that I was, like, amazed at, because they were, that you, you only get 18 by 18 inches to start. You can only start at that big. They just filled up the entire space, and they, they, you know, popped out to six feet-ish. Like, the robot would stretch to six feet tall.
Oh, you mean, it has to go in, and then it can extend?
Yeah, yeah, you have to start out at 18 by 18, which is the real challenging part, because you have to fit everything inside of that.
Wow. Well, well, I have to hand it to you guys, you know, your, your mentor, teacher, friends, because I know that there were a lot of other communities that started these robotics teams way earlier than us, and for you guys to be kind of coming later to the game and getting to this level is phenomenal. So, really impressive. Thanks for coming. Yeah, I can tell.
And I've sent out eighth graders now, instead of being with us, go to the high school. So, they'll be meeting with Connor and his teams, and they'll be working with the other.
A new crop. Yeah, it's awesome.
Nick?
I'm going to be self-appointed parent spokesperson, and I just want to say, as a parent of Thomas Pollard, that we, as the parents of these kids, are incredibly proud of them. This is an incredible commitment of their time and their energy. What they didn't tell you is that these, these, the competitions are, we get there at eight o'clock in the morning, and we're there till five o'clock in the afternoon on Saturdays, once a month, from October to February, March, April. The other thing that I really like about this program is it's not just about building and programming the rob, the robot. It is about socia, uh, working with the teams, because you're randomly paired up, and so you, you're learning to work together with people that you don't know. You're scanning and learning about the other team's robots, and planning on who you're going to invite to work with you. So, it's, it's so much more than just building, building and programming the robot. So, I just wanted to say that we are really, really proud of these guys, and that was a lovely video. Connor, you did a great job. So, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good job.
Hi, Jim Camataris. My question's for Mr. Gay, Ms. Mahoney. It's like, I want to know how your funding is. Do you have enough funding? This is the place to ask.
We got a transfer coming from the DPW.
There it's, they're scared of you. I'm a parent asking, do you have enough funding?
We did win this year a Grateful Family Trust Award, and we're using that for some of our entrance fees, and some of the small things that we need, and...
Do you need more?
We always need more.
Here we go.
Thank you very much. Appreciate that.
Thank you very much.
Thank you all for coming tonight. Appreciate it. Superintendent's report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Your words echo in this first entry that I have about changing the goalposts, and so we are changing the goalposts once again for MCAS. Last month, I attended a Next Generation Accountability System session hosted by DESI, and the goal of this was to roll out the components of the new state accountability system. These changes are in accord with the approved accountability system, as well as the outlined bullets in ESSA. So, they are out for public comment with an expected vote of approval by the Board of Elementary and Secondary Education in June. I'm sure you'll be hearing a lot more about this next year from Mrs. Murphy and others, but I wanted to just highlight some of the bullets. Again, I was at a session for about four hours and took notes feverishly. There is a wholesale change to this, so just a couple of bullets. No longer will we have schools or districts placed in that vertical hierarchy of levels one through five. Districts are classified based on the performance of the districts as a whole, not on the lowest performing school as we currently have. Accountability categories will define progress and the type of support from DESI, and the way they've got it set up is about 85% are in the category of meeting, partially meeting, not meeting, targets, and approximately 10% needing focused, targeted support, and 5% as underperforming and chronically underperforming. So, those would be analogous to the level four and five, we currently know. Instead of closing the achievement gap, which is what we've talked about for years, we're going to now focus on raising the achievement floor. Emphasis will be placed across the board, a lot of emphasis on the lowest performing 25% of students with criterion reference component calculation, which is based on 50% all students and 50% the lowest performing students. So, you can really see that the emphasis is on the lowest performing 25%. And every school, every district has a lowest performing 25%, no matter, you know, where your district falls. So, they felt that that was the best place to begin. There's also a new EL proficiency indicator, which have targets set from the starting point of the access results. That's the testing that we do every year with our ELs. It will also be based on starting points of grade, years in Massachusetts, and the goal is to set students on a nonlinear path to achieve EL proficiency in six years. There are many other accountability, additional accountability indicators beyond just the test scores, and I, and I love this part. Some are chronic absenteeism, which is defined as more than 10 days out of instructional time, and the percentage of 11th and 12th graders completing advanced coursework, for instance, AP and dual enrollment, and we certainly will benefit from that. Those are both areas that we shine in tremendously at Marlboro High School. So, the caveat is that the 2018 accountability percentile should not be compared to the percentiles from 2012, 17. It's a different comparison universe with inclusion of these additional indicators. So, it's a whole other, whole other deal. New district and school report cards are being worked on. They will be unveiled in the fall, and they will include factors such as discipline data, availability of art education. I love the inclusion of that. Educated data, course, grade nine course passing, per pupil expenditures, and potentially, and I asked the presenter this question, the school climate survey results, because I had predicted that that would at some point make its way into the accountability system, and I think that is a truism. So, much more to come, just some of the highlighted bullets. It's a fairly complicated calculation. Again, I'm sure Mrs. Murphy will do a great job of educating next year. I had the pleasure, once again, last week, to present to the students who are graduating in education majors at Framingham State University. This is the second year that I have brought Patty Brown, our Director of Human Resources. We had, I was expecting 35 when I wrote this. It was a little bit more. It was about 40, 45, because they included, thankfully this year, the elementary education educators, and why not? Why would it only be secondary? Because what we, what we talked about didn't just pertain to secondary. So, we talked about the changing landscape of education. I can't help but do that. How and where to market yourself, and what to expect from the interview process. I have to say, Framingham does a wonderful job of bringing along these young educators. We have many, many in-field study or practicums right now in our Marlboro Public Schools, and we did not leave the day without giving our business cards, because we're looking for substitutes, of course, in May when they graduate. It was just a great, tremendous opportunity. And a couple of music notes, as always, recognizing the efforts and the success of our music department. The Massachusetts Association for Jazz Education, MAJE. Congratulations to MHS Jazz Ensemble and Gary Piazza for receiving a gold medal at the state festival held on March 18th at Norwood High School. Most outstanding musicianship awards were given to Kaylee Davis, Matt Pearl, and Ben Simons, with Matt Pearl being awarded the district MVP. A gold medal at this festival gives the Jazz Ensemble an opportunity to perform at the Gold Medal Showcase being held on May 13th at Berkeley Performance Center in Boston. So, congratulations to them. And then MICA, the Massachusetts Instrumental and Choral Conductors Association. Congratulations to the music department again for their participation and their awards in this state MICA festival. Each performing group was evaluated based on a state standard, gold superior, silver excellent, and bronze good. Because of the gold medal performance, a cappella will have an opportunity to perform at Symphony Hall on Saturday, April 21st, and I do want to read the awards, because they're wonderful. High school string ensemble, silver medal. High school mixed chorus, silver medal. High school concert band, bronze medal. High school a cappella, gold medal, which is very hard to attain. High school wind ensemble, silver. Whitcomb 78 Concert Band, bronze. Whitcomb 78 String Ensemble, bronze. Whitcomb 7th Grade Chorus and 8th Grade Chorus, both bronze medals. Congratulations once again to our music department, and while I'm on the subject of our talented students, I talked to Heidi a little bit ago about her wonderful performance in Anything Goes this past weekend. The tap dancing, the singing, it was amazing. One might say it was de lovelie. Thank you. That concludes my report, Mr. Mayor.
Any questions for the superintendent? Tennessee?
Just one quick question, and I don't know if you have the information on it yet, but where they were mentioning report cards about availability of art education, are, did they delineate, is it all arts, performing arts, physical arts, music, like, or just not?
Not sure about that. It was art education, and I thought that was strange that they would just say, you know, just concentrate on visual arts. So, it must be arts in general, art in music.
Yeah.
And shockingly, because we're so used to such a robust program in both areas, there must be districts that don't have that.
Well, and a lot of folks are having to, frankly...
Having to cut.
Budget issues, and they are cutting that out. So, I, I guess that I understand why. I just was, thought it was interesting that it, art, you know, yes, it could be really broad, but what are they trying to gauge, so?
Not sure. We'll have to wait till the fall.
Okay, thank you.
And just on that line, MASCOR includes art education now.
One year of arts.
Is, is MASCOR, are all districts, do all districts have to follow MASCOR?
No, it's a suggested, recommended. We've been following it for years. I'll also make another prediction of computer science finding its way in there. I don't know how we're going to expand the data fit all this, as well as financial literacy. Two valid areas of concern, but yeah, it's recommended. It's not a requirement.
Thanks.
You're welcome.
Any other questions? Thank you very much. Assistant Superintendent Murphy?
Thank you. On March 16th, Mike Bergeron, myself, Jody O'Brien, Lynn Medelio, and Dan Riley attended the Leading Educational Access Project Conference, which is known as LEAP, convening conference at the Best Western Royal Plaza in Marlboro. Lisa Diker, Zaretta Hammond, and Jessica Minahan each did sessions focused on inclusive practices, culturally responsive practices, and mental health and behavioral best practices. After each session, our team was able to debrief and identify our next steps on each of these three topics as a district. MCAS. Students in grades three through eight have begun to take the computer-based MCAS exams. Grades three and four have already completed the EL, ELA sessions other than makeups, and mathematics will be assessed in May. Whitcomb School will be testing students throughout the month of April and May, because there, every single student is taking at least two assessments. Marlboro High School has completed the legacy MCAS testing and ELA, and will continue in May and June, when they will administer the mathematics and science exams. 69 students will also participate in a computer-based mathematics field test in late April and May, and within the next two weeks, we will be doing a infrastructure test for that computer-based assessment later on this month. End of the Year One Seminar, the MEA Mentoring Program was expanded, expanded this year to include a series of workshops focused on Aspen, the history of our district goals and their focus, the evaluation process throughout the year, learning targets and success... success criteria, and successful instructional strategies. This week, that series will end. Mike has asked for these workshops to be expanded next year. We'll be adding sessions on EL instructional strategies, social and emotional learning, and supporting special education students in our classrooms to these seminars next year. And finally, the Joint Evaluation Committee. The Joint Evaluation Committee recently met and reviewed the new language regarding evaluation in the new MEA contract. A secondary evaluator has been added to the evaluation cycle and will be phased in over the next two years. The joint committee is creating a formal process and a series of communications to all staff regarding the role of the secondary evaluator for all developing and professional status educators. Thank you. Questions?
Any questions? Senesi.
Thank you. Sixty-nine students, how, is that selected?
So that's three classrooms, and it was, that was the minimum amount of students that had to participate, and it's three math sections that will be tested.
Okay. And kudos to you all on moving forward on a secondary evaluator. I think that's a really great idea, and I will be really interested in hearing a little bit more about the communications of, of, you know, how that's going to happen, but I think that's a great, great idea.
We think it's a very positive step for all of us.
We always learn a little bit more by having, you know, a second set of eyes and somebody else giving us some perspective, so, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you very much. Director O'Brien.
Good evening. Let's see if this works. So first, one thing that was not in my report that I wanted to share with you is to save the date. On April twenty-seventh, we have our Special Olympics happening, and at my next quarterly report, we'll have Brian Simon and Kristin Chevalier come and do a presentation and bring some of our student athletes along with them to share how that day went. On May thirteenth and March twenty, March twenty-seventh, we had about fifteen high school and middle school staff along with administrators get together, and we met in, at the first meeting to discuss how to assess the district's transition services for special education students ages fourteen and older. And at that first meeting, we talked about the five different areas that we're going to examine, and those were in the areas of schooling or the academic area, career preparation, preparatory experiences, youth development and youth leadership, family involvement, and connecting activities. During our second meeting on March twenty-seventh, we were able to take the survey results from the first meeting that we had. Everybody had the survey, a survey to complete and then pass back in. That data was collected and collated by consultants from the Asbit Valley Collaborative, and they were facilitating this activity for us. In our second meeting, we broke out into groups and discussed the results, and we did a Back to the Future activity. And it was, it was really interesting. I think we had some really great conversations around where we want to see Marlboro for our programs and services and what we offer to students fourteen and older. And it was focused on special education, but we did also talk about all of our students in general, high school students, and where we want to see career readiness as well for, for all of our students. So we have one more meeting that's coming up that we need to finish this activity, where we're taking where we, where we want to be, where we currently are, and developing a strategic plan, and coming up with a three-year plan that we'll be able to implement. And once that's completed, I'll come back to the committee to share those results with you on what the specific action steps are as a result of this activity with the group. And we had a great group of, and we still do, have a great group of people that are working with us, special education teachers, general ed, some paraprofessionals, behavior technicians. John Fletcher, who's here, is the assistant director, as well as some of the educational team leaders. So we were able, in middle schools, it's middle school, Whitcomb, and high school that was involved. So we had a great cross-section of people to be able to get together and share where their perceptions are of, or from their area of work, where they see our strengths and weaknesses were. Okay, so I have a PowerPoint. Si?
No.
Okay.
It's good.
So what I did was, I put together data for the school committee on focusing on profiles of special education students. Do you have an idea of how many students we have? Are they, how many students are mostly included, partially included, substantially separate, how many are out of district? So I focused on each level. So we have our early childhood center, and that is housed here at, at that, and that is for preschool children that are ages three to five. And one of the challenges with the early childhood center is that the number that we start off with in the opening of school grows ongoing throughout the year. It's not like kindergarten registration where we have, we have a set number of students that are enrolled that we're working with, and some of them may be evaluated, picked up for special education. How it goes is we receive referrals from early intervention closely, but we can also get referrals from parents, from daycare centers, from pediatricians on children as they're approaching age of three. And our responsibility is, as far as childifying, is to look for children who at the, by the time that they're three, we would be providing services for anyone that's identified as having a disability. So that goes, is ongoing throughout the year.
Can you talk into the mic?
Talk into the mic, sorry. So that's ongoing throughout the year, and so the special education numbers increase. So we have our kind, the students who go on to kindergarten, and then we have to anticipate or predict how many students that we will get throughout the year. So our special education services include appointment-based services, which is speech, occupational therapy, physical therapy. So we have some students who only qualify for that, and that's what's on their IP. So parents will bring them in for that service, and then they go home. We have some students that receive those services on top of integrated preschool on their IP. So they'll come for preschool services or our substantially separate program, and that's, that's only for students with disabilities can be in our pathways program, which is our most significant student needs. And in the integrated preschool on top of students on IP's, we have our typical peers who come in who do not have special needs, who are not on IP's. And we have a mix of students who, it's, it's parent pay. However, if students, if families qualify, they can either have that, is it reduced or free? Do we do both?
Sliding scale.
So, yeah, thank you. A sliding scale. So right now, the tuitions that we receive, I'm sorry, I'm like trying to back read at the same time. The tuitions that we receive don't fully subsidize everything that, all the expenses of the early childhood. And down the line, we could have another presentation solely on early childhood, and where we'd like to see that go moving forward. Three of the top disability categories identified is developmental delay, which is a definition for students up to the age of nine, where they have a significant delay, usually in communication, motor skills, things like that. When they turn nine, from nine to ten, we can no longer, districts can't use that definition any longer. It either has to switch to another definition, or they should have been caught up by them to say that they're no longer developmental delayed. We have to do a reevaluation to determine-
They have to have an actual-
The second and third is autism and communication. We have a lot of language-based or articulation is a very frequent, a very frequent skillset that, that we have to pick up at the ages of three to five. So currently, we have two hundred and twelve preschoolers who are enrolled, of which ninety-one are on IP's, and, but from the time that I developed this slideshow, this could have changed. So, you know, we're always-
Of course.
Yeah, we're all, it's always changing. Every other grade during the year, you could do a plus or minus of about five-ish. But for ECC, it will continue to go through the year. We still have a number of evaluations from now till the end of the school year that we have to conduct. So we absolutely expect that to increase. This current number of two hundred and twelve preschoolers enrolled already surpassed last year's end-of-year limit of one hundred and ninety. Physical space is a challenge to expand in servicing future preschoolers in year services. So some of the things that we are looking at is, we currently have four half-day programs AM and PM along with five-day programs for some preschoolers. So it's looking at possibly, do we have to take a four half-day program and divide it into two, two-day programs and offer that to three-year-olds? That's something that we're exploring. Taking us, taking us district to district.
It would.
Yeah, it's just really running out of physical space, so. The building of the new elementary school and future plans for- For discussion. So then we have our three elementary schools. So Jarwick currently has ninety-seven students. Our IP's gave us at ninety-two. Richards are eighty. So I took the total population of each of, each of the schools, and they are, they're below the state average. So the state average is seventeen. About seventeen percent of students in the state are, are on IP's. And so we're below the state average. However, about a third of special education students at the elementary levels are also ELL students. So we haven't drilled down yet to look at whether we're over-identifying or not. We have to keep in mind that Marlboro has, just population-wise, we have a very high percentage of ELL students. So we also have to examine what percentage of ELL students have disabilities, not just compared to the whole overall population. So we will be having ongoing conversations with the educational team, looking and making sure that we are identifying students as having a disability and that the struggle is not, is it Nana?
No. It's Nana.
Green light.
Green light. That the, great. No, sorry.
Sorry, we keep slipping you up there.
No.
You have to go back to the beginning.
Rewind. So we're, we're having conversations with the educational team leaders and just making sure that, that the reason that the student is struggling in school is because of a disability, and it's not because of English as a lang, second language. Now, these numbers are low, and talking to Mary Murphy, we're looking over the numbers, and we have really strong RTI that's in place within the elementary schools right now, or, so response to intervention, really focusing on academic interventions. So, so we, we think that that's having a positive effect as far as the number of students that are in special education. And I have it later on a site, and I know I've said it before, but the stronger our regular ed is, the less special education we need, and the, the more that we're going to service all students. The, we do have three specialized district programs, and there's one in each of the elementary schools. So we have Pathways, that is located and housed in the Jarwick School. And so any students that, from Kane or Richard, that need a substantially separate program related to autism and needing ABA methodologies would be transported over to Jarwick School. Our TLC, our Therapeutic Learning Center, is at the Kane School, and our Connections Classroom, which is for global developmental delays, some type, medical issues, just really, students with, who are significantly below grade level, and really working more on basic daily, daily living skills and real, real basic skills, probably like, you know, aged four, four and five. And that one is, that one's located at the, at Richards School. So again, we have our educational team leaders who work together. If there's a student that's a move-in for one school, we coordinate. If, if it looks like they need to attend and participate in one of our substantially separate classrooms. We have bimonthly educational team leader meetings, where John and I sit and have a roundtable with the educational team leaders on talking about students who may not, who may be struggling in their homeschool and need more services that might be provided in one of our substantially separate classrooms. So across all three of our schools, elementary schools, the profile of students is, is pretty consistent regarding the, the amount of pull-out that they have. So we have less, we have sixty percent of our special education students on IP's that receive twenty-one percent, twenty-one percent or less of their time in pull-out. We have between, thirty percent of students who are between twenty-one and sixty percent, so that might be about, about two, looking at maybe about two hours a day of pull-out, and that might be for ELA or math, usually a core content area. And then we have about ten percent of our students who are in a substantially separate program, meaning that sixty percent or more of their time is in a special education classroom. And when I look at those numbers, that's, that's great news, because what that means is the majority of our students are spending the majority of their time in regular education classes. And this is why it's so important for our regular education programs and services to be strong, because the performance, the performance of our special education students is not just a special education issue, it's a general education issue too, because the majority of their time is being taught by, by general education in collaboration with special ed. So it's really a joint effort and not solely a special education issue in looking at making sure that our special education students make progress. So for Whitcomb School, I start, you could dice this information like any, any different way. I could break up each of the grade levels at the elementaries, but didn't want to put too much in numbers in front of you. But, so, we did break down grade five, six, seven, and eight at Whitcomb. We have seventy-seven students in fifth grade on IP's, and it goes fifty-eight in sixth grade, fifty-six in seventh, and forty-seven in eighth. So if you just looked at that, you'd be saying, wow, we have a ton of kids in fifth grade. But you also have to remember that fifth, the fifth grade enrollment in general is much larger. So that's why it's also important to look at the percentage numbers comparing them to the overall population. And even with that, though, we do have really high percentages in fifth and sixth grade, we're over the state average. Almost ninety percent in fifth grade, nineteen percent in sixth grade. And then it's, it's at the state average in seventh grade and a little bit below the state average in eighth grade. And so that's, fifth grade in general, that's something that we want to drill down and look at more information on. When were these students picked up? Were, were they identified in fourth grade, fifth grade? How many are move-ins? How many have been on IP's for a length of time? But what this is saying for fifth and sixth grade is that almost one out of every five students in fifth and sixth grade has a disability. And I think in, in working with staff, it's, it's, the question has to be not, is it, is there one in five students that is struggling and needs help? It's, do they have a disability? So those are the, those are the questions and conversations that we're going to have to have moving forward, especially when students are reevalved who are on IP's, to say, does the student have a disability, or are they just simply struggling? We need to get, give them extra help. ELL numbers are, so we, we go from thirty-eight percent of the fifth graders on IP's are also ELL, down to, you know, eight point six, then back up to twenty-one percent, and then down to two point eight in eighth grade. So we, at this point- So we, at this point in time, we don't know what the, what the reasoning is behind that. So we'll have to, again, look through the history of all 77 students and kind of dig through that history as to what happened with, with each one to come up with, is there a pattern? So we have the same three programs there at the elementary all come together at, at Wickham, and we service those students there. The percentages for the pull-out numbers are roughly about the same. There's slightly more students in pull-out services, but not, not by much. We go from 25% with moderate, you know, partial inclusion, the 21 to 60%. That went from 30% in elementary down a little bit, and that shifted to, from 10 to 15% going up to, as, as far as the number of students receiving pull-out. We have received a number of move-ins that, of students that have substantially separate services on their IEPs. And the top disabilities, at the middle school level, it does shift to specific learning disabilities, which can be in reading, writing, or math, where you have what their skills should be at based on their IQ level and where their skills are. And that's taking into account, making sure that it's not because of excessive absences, frequent moves, other contributing factors that may, that may be the rationale for the, for the gap between where they should be and where they are. Health is one of the top disabilities, and that's usually around characteristics of ADHD for students who usually need executive functioning skills, planning, organization strategies. Communication is still one of the top disabilities, as well as autism. Then, so for Marlboro High School in Hildreth, our percentages drop from, from the, from the middle school level. And in ninth grade, we dropped to 40 students on IEPs. We have to take into account students who go from eighth grade at Wickham, who may go to either Asbit Valley Tech or other, other schools, private schools. So we do have a drop in the overall enrollment and the number of students on IEPs. We're below the state average for students, students on IEPs, just about 16%. And only 5% of them are also ELL. Currently, we have 18 students in 10th grade. It's, it's 7% of the population, only 5% are ELL. 37 students on IEPs in the 11th grade. That's 13% overall, and 8% of them are, are ELL students. And in 12th grade, currently, we have 22 students on IEPs, and 7.9, that's 7.9% of the overall population, and none of those students are, are also duly identified as ELL. At Hildreth School, we have 35 students on IEPs. That's, it's approximately half of the student enrollment at Hildreth is special education. The other half is, is general education students. We have our three specialized programs that are continuing from the elementary Wickham and now the high school, Pathways, Connections, and the TLC program. But we also have our postgraduate program, which is for students 18 to 22. And we have a shift here in the percentages. We have more students who are serviced in more time in the regular classroom. So we go from 60% up to, almost 70, 70% of students receive most of their special education services in the regular education classroom. And then we have more students that are receiving more than 60%. So that middle number splits, and some goes to more time in general ed, and some of it goes to more time in a substantially separate classroom. The top disabilities is pretty consistent with Wickham, with specific learning disabilities, health and autism. And the fourth one here, intellectual replaces...
Communication.
Communication, thank you. So by then for communication, by the time you're in high school, it's, communication by then would be like a language-based learning disability that usually shifts to the definition of a specific learning disability in reading. Okay. Let's see. So our out-of-district placements, we have three different types of, of out-of-district placements. Collaborative, which is run by public organizations. For us, we have the Asbit Valley Collaborative. We also utilize Crest Collaborative, the Accept Collaborative, FLAC, no, just those two. And so they're run by public schools, organizations. That is the least restrictive out-of-district placement. Besides in district, coming from in-district programs, your next least restrictive is a collaborative program. And then from there, we have, so we currently have 15 students in collaborative programs. Next, you have private day programs. And we currently have 42 in private day. What I would like to see happen over time is I'd like to start seeing a shift to relying more on our collaborative programs to provide the services for our students and shift away from private days. Couple of reasons. One is private days are more expensive, but also there's less programmatic oversight with private day schools than our collaborative programs that we're, we're members of. And we currently have eight residential students, which are, it's 365 days, they're, they are fully like, living and being educated in that setting. And then for the numbers-wise, if you take all of our students in the collaborative, private day, and residential, right now, the K to four span, there's 10 of them, 10 students that are in out-of-district placements. At the middle school level, we have 16 students in out-of-district placements. We have a vast majority that are in nine through 12, 25, and then postgraduate, 14. So in 14, the postgraduate starts, you know, right after senior year, and that could be up to four, four years. So during our FY '20 budget cycle, we will have five, by, by the time we have the FY ' '20. So this will slightly impact FY '19, that's coming up, and it will absolutely impact FY '20. Five of our current eight residential students turn 22, and that will represent a decrease of $765,000 in our out-of-district tuition, which in turn, we will not be able to claim for, for circuit breaker reimbursement. And I know that's something that Mike Bergeron has talked about before. Right now, we have a very healthy circuit breaker. But moving forward, we have to know that the reimbursement amounts that we get from that, think of it as your tax refund. You know, our tax refund is going to be shrinking over time, so don't be counting on that for your vacations. So then in FY '21, we'll have one more residential student that ages out for a reduction of $120,000. That's all great news. That, so what we don't know is any students that move in that we'd be responsible for. It's a revolving door. But these have been fixed ongoing costs for us, for students that reside in Marlboro, families that reside in Marlboro. So we have to, you know, start having thoughtful planning on that. And then most of our out-of-district placements are due to significant mental health difficulties or severe autism, and that's usually around really aggressive, dangerous behaviors that, you know, physically, being physically dangerous to either themselves, other students, or staff, or also requiring multiple staff for majority of the school day to the point where it's disruptive, disruptive to students' education within our schools, that we need to look for outside placements. And then there are a select, there's just a handful that are due to language-based disabilities or significant medical needs.
This is standing seat.
I'd have questions. Of course they do. Thank you for the presentation. Yes, I do have a question, a few questions. How many of these students that might be in out-of-district placement, do you know by chance, may have come in recently? Because if they have come into the district after October, we take that, that hit of cost, correct?
After April 1st.
It's April 1st. Okay, so the October date is elsewhere.
Okay. So there is, I don't, I don't have an exact number offhand, but what I can tell you is that for Marlboro, there, we have a transient population, especially with DCF, as far as placements within programs that might be housed within Marlboro. Glen Haven Academy is, is one program that's housed within Marlboro. So we've been very fortunate that for, right now, for most of the move-ins that have come in, that we've had to assume fiscal responsibility or will assume fiscal responsibility. We've also had a very good, fair number who've moved out. So, so we've been very fortunate in that. So overall, it's, it's been pretty much a wash since our initial predictions back in January, with the exception of the collab, collaborative tuition, we had to look at adjusting a little bit. But overall, I think we're, we're looking at, at pretty stable numbers.
Okay. And then from a responsibility standpoint, do we, as the public school district, need to be providing services for students that attend IC and/or AMSA? I'm just curious what, how does that divvy up?
Sure. So AMSA is its own charter, is a public school, so they are responsible for providing their own services, and they have, they have their own special education director.
Okay.
There are times that we've collaborated with them on a student that they're looking for consultation on, on resources for. And then for IC, that, any Marlboro, any student that resides in Marlboro that attends a private school, whether or not it's at IC or say, St. John, St. Peters, you know, other private schools, they can be referred for a special education evaluation, and if they're found eligible, Marlboro is responsible for providing services to those students. And part of our 240 grant, our special ed entitlement grant, needs to be used towards proportionate share in spending to service those students.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
You're welcome.
The October 1st date, I'm sorry. The October 1st date you're referring to is for Chapter 70.
Okay.
Any other questions?
So the, the day schools that we're sending, are some of them, like the Center for the Deaf, I mean, are they specialized schools usually for a disability that the student has?
Yeah, so all the, all the private day schools that we have listed, the 45, are, are special education, Massachusetts approved, Massachusetts approves private special education schools. So it's, it's forced, they are for students with disabilities. There's a state rate that the state has approved for the tuition.
And what about medically fragile students that we have in district? I know some of them may not have special education needs in terms of their learning, but how do they fit into the mix?
So if, so depending on, on students in general, some students, if they require a related service of speech, OTPT, in order to access the general curriculum, then they would receive that on an IEP. If, if a student needs services due to a medical condition, but they don't require specially-designed instruction, that may be provided on a 504 plan, accommodations, and, as well as a healthcare plan that's designed by the school nurse in collaboration with the, the pediatrician.
And are they included in the numbers?
These are only special education students, students on IEPs, yes.
Do you have any sense of how many kids in the district have 504s?
I do, I do not have that information. We can get that for you, though.
Yeah, just curious.
Thanks.
Any other questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jody.
Minutes of March 27, 2018.
Motion to approve is submitted.
Motion made and seconded to approve. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, opposed, carries. Public participation. Any public participation? Public participation. And come up with state name and address for the record and sign into the book, please.
My name is Jamir Dexter. I'm from 99 Bylewood Circle, Marlboro. And I'm just, I just have a general concerns regarding the, the report that was made last night at the news. And I'm a little curious to find out what is the, the school policy in informing parents of incidents, you know, also protecting alleged victims and alleged abusers, because it's very...
Because, because we're in a legal process right now, we've been advised by legal counsel that we can't discuss the, the issue. And while it's going through the investigative process, we're not going to be discussing that. And it's not on the agenda tonight, so...
I'm not asking to discuss the issue. I'm just asking to find out what the policy is in informing parents in regards of any incident. Not just this incident, any incident in the school. I don't think that's very clear.
Different, different processes are handled differently, determined by the legal process required by the law. In this particular case, we've been advised that we can't discuss the issue while the investigation takes place.
I'd like to know why, if I know from the news...
Thank you, thank you very much for coming tonight, but we're not going to be discussing this.
Before I know from my own school.
We're not going to be discussing this tonight. Thank you very much for coming, though.
We're just not going to speak anymore, so we're definitely discussing it.
No, no. Actually, it's public participation on anything on the agenda, and what we're doing tonight is a public hearing on the budget. So if there's something on the agenda or the budget...
Yeah, I'm not sorry, Mayor, but there is some notes in your bottom of the agenda says that some other topics, topics might be discussed outside the agenda. So that's why we took the opportunity. It says, it says right here...
I think I just was very clear that we're not discussing it.
I understand that. I understand.
So I, I can tell you this, I can tell you, your children are completely safe.
That, that would have been nice to know a month ago, when the incident happened, notifying all the parents and letting them, letting them know that your children are safe. And because you're not only, you have to protect everybody. This is accusations. This is nothing that is being substituted in the court or anything.
And that's why we're going through the process.
Yeah, and I understand.
At that point, I'm going to shut you down and, so we can move on.
I understand.
Okay? But I, I want to assure the, you that the children are safe and the process is taking place.
Okay. And again, thank you for letting me speak, but...
No, I, I appreciate you coming.
And I try to be very respectful, although it's a very frustrating, frustrating situation because there's a lot of information that are coming through the backpipes, including counselors and so on and so forth. And all that information is not listed in any public school website or has been sent to the parents.
Oh, thank you, thank you very much. On the public hearing, public speaking in favor of the, the budget, is there anyone speaking in favor of the budget? Anyone speaking in favor? Are there any questions from the public on the budget? Any questions on the budget? Any questions on the budget? Anyone speaking in opposition to the budget? Is there anyone speaking in opposition? Anyone speaking in opposition? Seeing that, I close that part of the public hearing, the entire public hearing. Mr. Chairman, any comments before we send it down your way?
I'm just looking forward to it.
Thank you very much. With that, I will move on to MHS Business Professionals of America.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As you know, and we read the names not long ago of the winners of the BPA State Leadership Conference. This was held at the Sheraton Terra early in March. We had 11 students, a total of them, who were eligible to attend the National Leadership Conference. This year, it will be held in Dallas. And we are seeking approval this evening, or shall I say, the high school, we're seeking approval for sending six of our students from the Marlboro High School BPA to, who have qualified and who would be moving up to this National Leadership Conference. And the materials in your packet explain to you... And the materials in your packet explain to you the process. You've seen this before. And we are seeking your approval for the six students, because it is an overnight trip to Dallas.
Do we want to send them?
Motion to approve.
Motion made and seconded to approve. Any discussion? See it? This is Matthews.
It's not here, and usually it is here, is the form for the protocols for out-of-state trips. So I just wanted to... I mean, they gave the itinerary, but I will make sure they follow the protocols. Mrs. Matthews, thank you.
Any further discussion?
It has to be signed.
Seeing none, all those in favor, opposed, carries. Policies.
So in front of you, in your packet, you received a number of policies for first read. Policy 1.100, non-discrimination. 2.200, legal status. 2.210, powers and duties. 2.221, school committee member qualification. Policy 2.222, faculty representative on the committee. 2.223, student advisory committee. 2.224, student representative on committee. 2.250, vacancies. And then policy 8.012, health and wellness. So many of those, especially in Chapter 2, don't even have that many changes. You'll notice that there was more letterhead changes. Non-discrimination, that was a discussion that we needed to have with our attorneys on a few specific items that they needed to have added to adapt to current language. And then health and wellness, that is one that we've been reviewing for a while. So, any questions? I'd appreciate hearing from you over the next two weeks before we would then move it forward for our vote, so that I can, if I need to go and get responses from someone, I have time to do that. So please get ahold of me, reasonably so, so I can get answers back to you. And as you will note, there was a policy that was on the last agenda that I do not have on here for a vote tonight. Ms. Sabilio actually sent out comment to you all for some questions that Mr. Walter had had, and I wanted everyone to have time to really review those comments. Once you've had a chance to review that, I'd appreciate if you still have any additional questions, please let me know again so that I can make sure that everything is satisfied before we would bring it forward for our vote to have discussion that night. But I did not want to throw that at you and then expect a vote. So that is why it's not on the agenda tonight. So thank you.
Thank you very much. FY '19 superintendent budget.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We have proposed a budget of $61,756,164. It's an increase over our FY '18 budget of 2.88 percent. It includes two new FTEs, one Spanish and one Portuguese translator. And we did have a budget workshop to discuss the budget, to answer questions. Hopefully, we've answered those questions. I left you a voicemail, Ms. Hennessy, about the open questions. So now the superintendent's budget is in front of the committee for approval, and it's yours to act upon.
Entain a motion.
Motion to approve the fiscal FY '19, 2019 budget of $61,756,164.
Motion made and seconded to approve. Further discussion? Ms. Hennessy.
Thank you. I guess I... And I'm sorry that we weren't able to connect, but I definitely was interested in understanding a little bit further around the shift of world language at the middle school and understanding the threshold for students, you know, either receiving the opportunity of being a part of world language or then needing the additional assistance for ELA, and how that really was going to kind of be laid out. I know that we had come back for MCAS as being one of the guidances, if you will, but then there was a mention of a universal screener and solidly at grade level, and I was looking to gaining a little bit more insight about what really is that bar possible.
So I did ask Principal Daniels, and he did respond that they are using FAS bridge data and not solely MCAS data for the benchmarks.
Okay. And is that something where there's, you know, based upon that data and then the gathering of whomever those students are, will that then trigger a conversation with the parents about that need as opposed to those students just automatically either being dispersed here or there?
Mr. Daniels is preparing a letter to go home to grade seven parents about that very issue. And if the parents disagree with the placement of the child, whether they would be receiving the world language or not, he is opening up his time so that the parents can meet with Mr. Daniels and/or the appropriate people to make sure that they can have a conversation about what's best for their child. So that way, if they don't believe they want the reading interventions and they do want the world language, he was trying to open an avenue for them to have a discussion about it and why one might be more important than the other at this particular time.
Okay. And is this something where we're looking at hopefully using this as, I don't know, a reinforcement for a certain time period to hopefully get us back on track, if you will?
Absolutely.
And so that we are not losing sight on the opportunities of world language, because I know, you know, when we pushed forward on getting this into the middle school a number of years ago, I really just don't want to lose sight on the opportunities that are available to these students. I clearly recognize the need for making sure that solidly the students are supported in ELA and being at grade level, if not higher. But I definitely don't want to lose sight of this opportunity, because I think that's an area where we have sparked, that we are pushing the opportunity for world language in the middle school. So I'm really concerned about it. I get the reasoning why, but I'm really concerned about it. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Motion made and seconded to approve. All those in favor, opposed, carries. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
President's donations and gifts. Tennessee Health School, Witten School, $213,000. Richer School, $588,000. Kane School, $258,000.
Motion to accept.
Motion made and seconded to accept. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, opposed, carries. Reports of the subcommittee. Mrs. Ryan.
Let's see. So this morning, I had the opportunity to attend the board meeting of the Massachusetts School Building Authority, along with Mayor Vigent, Superintendent Gruelich, Assistant Superintendent Bergeron, Representative Gregoire, and Gentile were there as well. Am I missing anybody? And so we were...
Project Andrew was there also.
Yes, our Tom Costounis was also there. And so the board approved the next step toward the elementary school, which is the funding of the project. And we were also highly commended for being financially prudent with our new building project. A couple of the board members specifically brought it up, financially prudent. And...
Wait, wait, see it one more time.
Financially prudent. It was several million less than any of the other projects they had on their agenda today. So we were highly commended for our model school financially prudent project. Thank you.
Thank you. The policy subcommittee is going to have another meeting coming up on the 26th. As we're trying to just continue to update things. And just a note on the health and wellness policy that you have in your packet for tonight. We have reviewed that with Todd Turcot and Mary Z. I am going to the SWAC meeting for Michelle tomorrow, so please note that you may be hearing possibly from us if, for some reason, someone on the SWAC committee has something to add or concern or something. So you may hear from us in the meantime. We think we've hit everything with making sure that they were all a part of it, but I just wanted you all aware that you might get a little hiccup along the way. Okay? Thank you.
Any other reports? Ms. Matthews.
So negotiations are continuing with paraeducators, behavior technicians, and we just met today to open the office support unit. And we have a date in the far future for the administrators. Do we have a date? No, we don't have a date. Well, we do... No, we don't. We don't have a date yet, but... Almost have a date. Yeah. Yeah. Well, we've been... Their calendars are full. We're talking. And we came to a unanimous yes vote on a contract for July 1 superintendent, Mr. Bergeron. I'll be happy to give you a copy for you to sign, if you're happy to have it.
Sign it right now. I'm real excited about it. Glad we could come to a contract.
Yep.
That was 15 minutes of long, hard negotiation.
Twenty-two.
Thank you very much. Congratulations. You're welcome. Stick it around.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Members' forum. Any members' forums? Ms. Matthews.
I reviewed the warrant and signed it.
Warrant's good.
I have a couple things.
Paul and Henj.
Thank you. Anyone who's interested in attending Dan the Hill, if you could please let Patty Sabilio know, she's going to register. Anyone who is going.
Do you need to be registered? Are you part of it?
Yeah, and I talked to her about it.
Okay. She asked me to ask her.
We don't have to pay for me, but I do have to register.
But she needs to register. Okay. And she reached out to students as well?
Yes. I saw that. She CC'd me on that.
Okay.
And also, I just wanted to bring people's attention, and I'm going to provide backup information on this, but I recently had a conversation with a young woman who graduated from Marlboro in 2013, Samantha Perlman, some people may know, who went to college, I think political science major, and she is now working for a nonprofit that helps to engage young people in civic-minded political process, nonpartisan, just getting kids, young people involved and interested. And her organization, and she's very, you know, highly involved in this, is working on a bill, which is Senate Bill 2375, which is an act to promote and engage, and enhance civic engagement. And what this is, is a, an act to have civics taught in public schools in Massachusetts. My first question, after she gave me her whole spiel, is, is this another unfunded mandate? And she said, actually, it's not, and I have all the information that built into the bill is a funding mechanism for it, that districts would be eligible for, should they, you know, be involved in this act. So she's kind of looking for support. They're getting it from all over the state. This is a, it's kind of a big deal, and they have a lot of legislators who are already signed on to it, so they're pretty sure that it's going to pass anyways. But I will pass information about it to everyone.
Is this in her?
It's in, I forget. But, yeah, it's in all the information. And maybe we can read through it, and if anybody's interested, we can, you know, send a letter of support to Danielle or Jamie or, well, it would be Jamie, because it's in the center right now.
So this actually overlays with the history frameworks that are still out for public comment, and I think they're suggesting eighth grade physics, civics.
It is younger.
Civics.
It is younger.
It is younger. We currently have a civics component in 10th grade, and they're pushing it to eighth in terms of the frameworks. So in...
Yeah, she did mention it is all tied in with Desi and the frameworks. I mean, they've done a really, really good job on this, on the background for this, so I'll pass it along.
Any other members? Any other members? Seeing none.
Move to adjourn.
Motion made and seconded to adjourn. All those in favor, opposed, carries. Thank you very much.